We are now resuming the balance of today's committee of the whole council meeting, starting with item 1.2 under Development Services with Counselor Roy DiClemente in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are on item I two of our prepared agenda, which is Development Services Planning Branch Report DS 25-06, which is an amendment to draft approved plan, draft approved plan of subdivision application for 18508 Leslie Street. I have a resolution here that we received the report, that we approved the proposed amendment to add the subject lands, municipally known as 18508 Leslie Street, to the draft plan, approved plan of subdivision, which is 19T-14001, subject to draft plan conditions included as appendix four to the report, that we also enacted bylaw to remove the holding symbol from the subject lands, and that the draft plan of subdivision approval, as outlined in the report, will lapse if final registration is not granted within three years of the draft approval date, and no draft plan extension is approved in accordance with section 5132 of the Planning Act. So before I turn it over to Mr. Krubnik, may I have a motion to that effect?
Okay, moved by Counselor Crone, thank you. Mr. Krubnik, do you want to present this one to us, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through you. I think you went through the recommendations fairly clearly. At the end of 2024, the applicant, the council did grant allocation to this, to the subject lands, and the holding provision that was on these lands required that the region town confirm that servicing allocation is available prior to it being lifted. So that is the rationale for us bringing the lifting of the H today. Previously, council had seen in a public meeting as well, the desire for these lands to also be amalgamated into a larger draft plan of subdivision, so the applicant can move forward. Now, we do have a site plan application that is active and is several years old on this site, but with this change, essentially of this parcel being brought into the larger subdivision fabric, there has been a revision to the site plan, and we are in receipt of that as well presently and working through that, as now the heritage structure is being retained on site.
Thank you, Mr. Krubnik. Members of committee, do you have any questions? Counselor Johns, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I was, I was reading through the draft plan agreement, and then I was, if everyone goes to page 70 of the 201, which is item number 33 in the thinking green standards, and I was thinking about the different education, public education seminars that I attended with Ms. Ross and team, and then I was thinking about, it was Earth Week, and I noticed on 33, we, what is standard within the draft agreements is that the town supply the recycling containers, blue box and green bin, and then the one kitchen collector. I feel like the opportunity to evolve these agreements to include rainwater collection barrels as part of that, they're very low cost, and I think that, you know, each development is different with the way that, whether it be stacked towns or towns, but I feel like adding that in would have a large benefit to the residents and also the symbolic messaging of where we're attempting to go with the municipality. So I don't know if that can be done at this point at a one-off, or if I, if I could bring it up later, but that, that is where my head was at after reading the agreement and looking at page 70 of 201.
Thank you, Counselor Johns. What I would like to see us do is, is hold that thought, because I think it applies to townwide, not necessarily to this, to this application. So I will entertain a motion from you, following the dealing of this matter, if that's okay. Mr. Krubnik, I did notice that our resolution providing allocation said that we would provide up to 53 units, and at this point, it's confirmed that they need just 38 in order to build the 43 townhomes. And so I would like to propose, Counselor Crone, if you're amenable, that we amend the resolution, I think it's the third clause regarding the holding symbol, that appendix three be amended. I think it's just that we want to refer to the fact that the applicant is going to use allocation, but I don't wish to unnecessarily assign them 15 units that they aren't going to necessarily need in order to get this done. Is that a fair request? Counselor Crone, are you okay with that? No, you're not?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crone. Mr. Krubnik, did you care to comment on that?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think that's a good approach, given the fact that within the site plan approval stage right now, there, there may be some wiggle room required for an SDE plus minus, so I'm amenable to that change as well. Thank you.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, the third clause will be simply that it's, as outlined in appendix three, as amended to the Development Services Report. There's a bylaw, there's a line, the first line of that bylaw that we need to amend. Mr. Krubnik, can you comment on the process that we work through, in the sense that we don't have an approved site plan, and yet we're still removing the hold symbol? It seems to me that we're putting the cart before the horse. Can you help me understand how that process works, please?
Sure. And through you, Madam Chair, that's, I think that's a little bit of a municipal process on our end. We tend to place, and it's not unusual from other municipalities as well, place, tend to place an H on a hold on our zoning provisions, or once they are approved, typically approved with an H, and that is for allocation, right? So we don't have allocation in many of our communities, so we put that H and lift it once allocation is provided. Now, sometimes we provide allocation at a later stage in the process. In this case, council happened to approve allocation for this subject site at the end of 2024, so that's why we are before council today, to lift that H, because we have received allocation at, we previously received allocation for this site. So, but to your point, Counselor, there can be instances as well where we might be coming before council, once approval is received at a site plan stage, but prior to it being an agreement being executed.
Thank you. So I think in future, or perhaps the next step would be for you to advise us when a site plan has been agreed to and signed, because we don't have, we don't, we don't have a say in that process, but it might be helpful for us to have the final site plan once it's been approved, since, quite frankly, this is the first time we've seen the revised site plan, and it's buried on page 42 of 42 for us to be able to engage with. So I just, for, for our purposes, to close that loop, it might be helpful. My own feedback was that I wanted to make sure that, from an architectural perspective, that some changes were made to make sure that there was a little bit more in keeping with the heritage nature of the, of the house that's being retained, and the architectural control guidelines for the Sharon Village as a whole. So I just provide you with that feedback. Counselor Cruthers, I saw your hand.
Thank you. I have some similar thoughts, that I was wondering why we were releasing the H today, when I see in the report that planning staff note that a number of additional technical studies have been submitted, and are currently being reviewed. As a council, we've lost so many of the points where we can make a decision on things, and so much of it is now delegated to staff, that releasing the H is one of the few things that we still have control over. So I'm not interested in release, removing the H on this until it does meet council's expectations, and I'm not sure we're there yet. So my question through you to Mr. Krubnik is, what happens if we don't remove the H today, but put it off for a few months, or whatever timeline is sufficient?
Go ahead, please.
Through you, Madam Chair, yeah, I, I would suggest, at least in, in the future, if that is an interest to council, that perhaps the allocation then be held off till a later stage as well, but the H has been put on simply for the allocation. Now that the allocation is in hand, I feel that there's very little stand on to hold back that, the removal of the H, because it was simply placed in, put in place for the allocation to be obtained by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Krubnik. Counselor Cruthers, I do note that there's also an expiry that's placed with the last clause, it says that it expires within three years if there's no final registration, so we do have that as well. Any further questions? So I have a motion from Counselor Crone, that's been slightly amended with the clause three. We understand the intent of that motion. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you very much. Counselor Johns, you wanted to put forward, before I move on to the next item, you wanted to put forward a motion that, if I compare a phrase, that you would like some kind of consideration or reporting from staff on the feasibility of providing rainwater harvesting facilities, barrels of that ilk, along with other waste collection.
Within, within the draft plan of subdivision agreements moving forward.
Counselor Leahy.
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you very much. It's very timely, because it was just over a week ago that we had the Eco Fair, which was, I enjoyed very much, and as a follow-up, I asked our, our Director of the Environmental Initiatives if there were rain barrels that were available for residents and for counselors to purchase, because I'm thinking, I'm looking forward to the summer gardening season, and taking into account the, the cost of water, et cetera, and, and being environmentally friendly and sustainable. So I would, I would suggest that this is a great initiative to include it in, in future developments, if staff feel that, that it could be potentially provided, to provide rain barrels to the, the new developments, as well as to residents who wish to purchase them from the town, as part of our environmental initiatives, so.
Sounds like you're in support.
Yes.
Thank you.
Point of order, I think you need a seconder for the motion before we talk about it anymore? Do we not?
No, we're in committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Madam Clerk, I know you've been typing away furiously. Can you put that up on the screen for us, please?
There it is.
Okay, so that, moved by Counselor Johns, as staff report back on the feasibility of providing rainwater harvesting options within the draft plan of subdivision agreements. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, is it possible at this point to add it to, extend it beyond just the draft plan of submission, subdivision agreements, and extend it to more of a townwide initiative?
I'm sure that staff would be reporting back to us on sort of all of it, I would imagine.
Could we include that? I think it's better to have it in, in writing and in detail, so what we're asking staff to do, so that it wouldn't just apply to the draft plans of subdivision agreements, but also to potentially any resident within East Gullum Berry.
Counselor Johns, it's your motion, can we, would you be willing to have it be amended, that staff report back on the feasibility of providing rainwater harvesting options to residents, including within the draft plan of subdivision agreements?
So, respectfully, I've, I've lost a motion today, so I, I'm really trying to find a way to eat the elephant. I feel like this might be the opportunity where we can create some larger change, and then, once we get the win, being able to get another win, like I support the spirit of what Counselor Leahy is saying. I was just hoping that we could just check the box on this, and then get the ball rolling.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Cruthers, you had a comment as well?
And I also just wanted to comment that I felt that it was a little bit off of scope. I agree 100%, this is what we should be doing, but I just wanted to make sure that we're following procedure, that we're speaking to the agenda item that's before us, and I see tangentially how it's related, but I think it's got to be brought up in a different venue, but I would be wholly supporting it when it's brought up under the right agenda item.
So this is, I mean, I was trying to entertain it as we're in committee, and I understood that the spirit of it was looking to amend our standardized subdivision agreements, and so that's where I, that's why I entertained it, and at this point, we're just asking staff for a report. Okay. So I've got a motion as presented on screen, moved by Counselor Johns, all those in favor, opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is Planning Bench Report DS 2025-07, a heritage removal request for 18512 Warden Avenue. I have a motion that we receive, and we approve the request to remove from the Registry of Cultural Heritage Projects, properties, and permit the demolition of the dwelling on the subject lands. May I have a motion before? Okay, I've got a motion from Counselor Leahy. Mr. Krubnik, anything further to add to your report?
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, nothing to add to it, other than I'm here to answer any questions of council.
Thank you. Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you. When we've had other removals, I've made the same comment, that making these removals, when we know we're having a heritage strategy coming forward, seems a little bit cart before the horse. Looking at this one, it definitely does seem like it is not something that should be, have been on the heritage list to begin with, so I'm in favor of removing it, but I still want to ask, when are we going to see that heritage strategy?
Mr. Krubnik, I know you're working, your staff.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, yes, I am working diligently on this strategy. So I, I am still anticipating getting it back to council, and I, you know, hesitate to say this, but I will say it on the June 24th agenda, so if, you know, I will aim for that for council, and bring it back to you guys to have a look at the strategy, heritage strategy. Now, just to say, on this particular application, I will say, Counselor Cruthers, the one thing that maybe make you feel better about it is the fact that, you know, it has been vetted through the Heritage Committee, and also has no identifiable features that have been listed for us, as well that within 60 days, we do have, have to make a decision one way or another on this, on the request before us.
I appreciate all that, and thank you for that clarification, but let's just, and I know how busy you are, but I just really want to get that heritage strategy before we have any more of these removals coming forward. Thank you.
I think, I think Mr. Krubnik would like to have that off his plate as well, so while, while we do have you on camera saying June 24th, we understand that there's a, that there's an asterisk there, that it's plus or minus. So I have a, he didn't say what year, that's right. Okay, so I have a motion from Counselor Leahy as presented, all those in favor. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is a memorandum regarding 2024 building activity, a year-end summary. Mr. Krubnik, are you going to be presenting this, or is Mr. CBO going to be on the hot seat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be, I, you know, I have this memo here today to present to council. Our chief building official address is here to answer any questions of council. This is a legislative requirement, so that's why you're seeing this today. So again, I'll take any questions of council on this memo. Thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to ask for a mover. Any questions? Okay, may I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Crone. Thank you, Mr. Zany. All those in favor? And that motion carries. We're rounding around to the end of the prepared agenda with Development Services memorandum regarding a profi, an official, sorry, a proposed official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for the northeast corner of Highway 11 in Crimson King Way. And we are, we have a memorandum that is just to be received today. May I have a mover? Counselor Foster, can I put you down for that? Thank you. Mr. Krubnik, did you want to add anything to your memorandum at this time?
Nothing else, Simon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll just comment that it's an interesting decision to, choice to, to move industrial and warehousing into neighborhood commu, commercial, and, you know, having it in conjunction with a grocery store might be an interesting conversation that we're going to be having as we work through this process. So I have a motion from Counselor Foster, that we receive the memorandum. Counselor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. We had an open house, and the community came out in large numbers, and we're not at all happy with the thought of warehouses right on their, in their backyards. So I think we need to think very carefully before we go forward with another public meeting. When we invite the public in, there's often implied intent that we're seeking their input, and the input was unanimous, pretty much, that nobody wanted to see these warehouses there. Now, we're going back to another public meeting, and I think it's very unfair to the residents to go back to the, to another public meeting with the exact same thing that they just said no to at the last public meeting. Now, I know they're not the ones that make the decisions on this, and our hands are tied on this, but it's very hard for me to support industrial use in the backyards of residential.
Shots fired, Mr. Krubnik.
Thank you, Counselor Cruthers. Through you, Madam Chair, you know, I'll take that input, this is an application that's been made, I'm bringing it to council's attention, and I'm looking for every feedback you have to provide on this application, including when we bring it to a public meeting before council and the public at large.
Thank you. Yes, follow up, and then I have Counselor Crone.
So I'm trying to understand how I explain to residents why we're having another public meeting, when they've already had this public meetings, come out, spent their evening telling their concerns, I'm just trying to figure out, how do I communicate to them that we're asking them to come out again on the exact same thing? If you can help me figure out what, what is different about this open house versus the last one that we had, or public meeting?
Through you, Madam Chair, and I believe Counselor Cruthers, correct me if I'm wrong, are you referring to, I believe, a community consultation out in your word on this application, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, and I understand that there, you know, the feedback that was received at that point as well, I think the best thing to explain to your constituents is that this is a, this is something that a landowner is, is a right of, or a hold, a right held by landowner to make. You know, we are listening to what they are communicating to us, we are providing this feedback back to the landowner as well, but they have made this application, the previous, in phase one, Counselor Cruthers, phase one also was a site plan approval, so did not require a public consultation, or public, sorry, what we deem a public meeting before council, there was a consultation in the community, but not a public meeting here at council. So this, well, next time you see this, Counselor Cruthers, this will be a public meeting as defined by the Planning Act before council.
Yes, and, and we in this room understand that, but the public don't. So they just see another meeting on the same warehouses in a different venue. So we have to be clear how we manage these expectations, because it will be out in public that somehow council is endorsing this, that council is building these warehouses. So we're going to have to be a little bit more clear when we are communicating that this is just the landowner is bringing this forward, this is not endorsed by council at all. I think that it's very confusing for the general public to understand why they're being invited to another meeting. We understand the difference in the Planning Act and everything else, the average resident doesn't, and they have spoken loud and clear against this. The fact that the developer didn't listen to the residents and try and modify this in any way is coming back before council, I think is offensive to the residents who spent their time coming out, saying this is not what we want to see in our backyard. So when we do have this public meeting, I know there's certain standards that, that need to be upheld, and that with the Planning Act and that, but I think we need to be very, very clear that we're managing expectations around what this meeting is about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that point, Counselor Cruthers, and through you, Madam Chair, you know, I welcome your feedback on how to add clarity to that, and I will work with our communications team as well to help get that message across, and hopefully the next memo or report we bring to council as well, will make that clear. And if it is in a public, public meeting venue as well, that will, there will be some clarity around that as well for the presentation provided to, to council.
Thank you, Mr. Krubnik. Counselor Cruthers, it's not, it's not, this is a slightly different situation, but we struggle with this a lot, in, in the language being, you know, that an application has been made, and the town is processing it, and, and it's hard to convey that to residents without, you know, implying that there's some sort of approval already in play, and that, that we're really simply just doing what is our legislated duty to do, which is to process an application. Maybe it's that an application for further changes has been made, or something to that effect for, for residents. Counselor Crone, I see you also wanted to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, yeah, I'd like to echo some of the comments made by my colleagues here, I think, an industrial facility near an urban center is a courageous choice. I don't know if I would have made it, but it's, I think it may, this may, if I was a neighboring resident here, I'd be concerned as well. I am disappointed that there's, and maybe it's, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I'm disappointed that I'm not seeing more efforts to buffer the space between the residential and this, and this development. I think there's a lot of opportunity there to plant some trees, put up a fence, anything to help mitigate the, you know, the eye, eye pollution that will be with this. So I think if you can have any chat with, with the developer on this, I think there's, I think there's plenty of opportunity to mitigate some of the, the visual, you know, appearance of this, it's, it needs, it needs some, it needs some work. So I know we have, we, there's only so much we can do from our end, but I think if the, if the developer wants to be a good neighbor, I think they will try to make every effort to mitigate the unpleasantness of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crone. I think eye pollution is the quote of the day. So I have a motion from Counselor Foster, that we receive the memorandum. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our prepared agenda. Mr. Krubnik, did you have anything further to add at this time?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, seeing nothing further from my colleagues here, I will pass the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
We are now at item J, Corporate Services, with Counselor Cruthers in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on the prepared agenda, but I believe we are going to defer the first one, is that correct? And through the clerk, do you want a motion to defer? Okay, so, did you want to speak to the reason to defer this, just a matter of time, I believe?
It is a matter of timing and scheduling. The speaker was prepared to speak this morning, but wasn't in his schedule for this afternoon, so.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to defer this, and we should put a time on it, do we know when?
Um, before the summer, so I'm looking at May 21st, but I'm still waiting to confirm with the consultant.
So we're still in Q2 then? Later in Q, later in Q2? So a motion to defer this item to later in Q2? Someone to move that? Counselor Roy DiClemente, any discussion? All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. The second item on the agenda under Corporate Services is a presentation on Climate Action Program. Thank you, I'll turn that over to you.
So through you, Madam Chair, it's actually interesting, because this falls on the heels of the conversation that council just had around some initiatives that can be undertaken, and so this actually fits in nicely. The next item we have is the Climate Action Program, which Chris Ross, the Environmental Initiatives Program Manager, will present. As Chris will describe, the Climate Action Program is a critical component of our journey towards being a diverse, resilient, and sustainable community. I will pass it to Chris.
Thank you. And that's what I was getting at, about a more appropriate place on the agenda, about the rain barrel, so this is a good time for that. Thank you.
Oops. Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Chair, members of council, thank you very much for having me today. I am going to present our Climate Action Program, and kind of a little bit of story how we get here. I, I had a joke that I don't know how it's going to go, but I wanted to ask if any of you know, how, what is the difference between weather and climate? No? We can weather tree, we can not weather trees, but we can climate. Ooh, okay, now going to the seriousness of the presentation. I would like to start this presentation setting I would like to start this presentation setting a little bit of the tone of what we're talking about. And I want everybody to imagine someone work day in 2050. And that person can be your child, your grandchild, your niece, your grandniece, or someone really close to you. For the matter of this exercise, we will call them Blake. And Blake can live in a couple, I, I want to describe a couple of scenarios where they can live in. Scenario one is that Blake has a really great job working to accommodate growth. Most of this growth happens from a number of climate refugees coming from, coming to Canada. Blake doesn't go outside very often because it's too hot. In fact, right now, it is 41 degrees centigrade. And it usually is also wet, and roads are very often flooded and congested. Also, virtually everything can be bought online. And the problem now is that Blake, Blake's wearable device is telling them that they are getting unfit and the risk of having heart disease is getting higher every day. They need to exercise more, but outside is usually too hot or too wet and uncomfortable. Besides, all public areas have been transformed to housing. Thankfully, there are always medicines to stop off most diseases. Blake doesn't really know the neighbors, and although it's not a bad life, it's pretty lonely. They talk and have an interaction with the robot, who also takes care of them. The other scenario, though, is that Blake's, Blake has a really, a great job at refurbishing technology and infrastructure. This conserves resources. Blake cycles to a workspace, to a workspace they share a couple of days a week. And even though roads are flooded most of the time, sorry, roads get flooded. They are, these roads are built for that. And Blake knows that this water is not going into their home. Blake also endures several heat waves a year. But the tree canopy in the city helps to endure this, this heat very often. And Blake and their friends embrace the circular economy. And the, this society basically recycles and reuses everything. And it is a society that thrives on the circular economy. This society often discusses how their role in society helps support their local and global community in the face of shocks that the, the future may bring. So the conclusion for this scenario envisioning is that climate action creates opportunities for all, regardless of their religious, political, or other affiliations. This means that it creates spaces for community building, economic development, and respect for freedom. It protects human health and safeguards ecosystems and biodiversity, ensures food security, reduces the challenges of water scarcity, and increases resilience to face extreme events. In other words, today's climate action is a message of care and love to our children, grandchildren, and their children and grandchildren. So with that, I want to speak about how the Climate Action Program links to the strategic plan. And as you can see, we have the direction from the strategic plan to develop and implement programs and policies that support climate change adaptation, mitigation, and resiliency. And this is what we're going to talk today. But also, a little bit of concept setting is what is climate action and what is climate change? So climate change is the long-term shift in weather patterns primarily caused by human activities like burning fossil fuels. And these activities releases greenhouse gases that basically act as a blanket for our atmosphere and captures heat from the sun. That in other, in, in natural ways, part of that heat goes away. Climate action, on the other hand, is efforts aimed at addressing and mitigating the impacts that climate change is, is producing. And this includes policies that help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, enhance resilience to climate-related impacts, and promote sustainable practices. In other words, climate change is not part of the natural variability. And although the earth has had many different glaciation cycles and warm cycles and like ice, ice houses, I think is the name of that, and hot houses. The rate, the speed, and the amount that change that is happening right now is not allowing the planet, these species, to adapt to it. Climate change is not beneficial, even though there is the argument that when you have a greenhouse, you inject CO2 to these greenhouses to increase productivity in plants. When we are talking about the world climate system, we are counting many more factors that really, we should be considering when we're talking about injecting CO2 to the atmosphere. And we are talking about oceanic, oceanic currents and atmospheric patterns and many other factors that really make climate to be a complicated matter. In this regard, the evidence is piling. And I was told this week that I usually scare people once in a while. But the intention is not to scare anybody, is to let you know that there is piling evidence that climate change is a reality nowadays. I remember 25 years ago, I cannot remember, I say, I cannot believe I say that number, but yes. 25 years ago, I was trying to learn more about climate change. And I remember saying, we are not that silly. And we are now at that time when we need to rethink what we're doing. And as a, as a, as an example of that was this year, ice storm. The data tells the story, though. If we don't believe what the news are telling, we need to believe that the data doesn't lie either. So the, why we are having climate change is because the weather is getting W-W-W. It's getting warmer. You can see in the graph, in the lower number, we have the average for the last three years from 1971 to 2000. And the upper number is the modeling for mid-century to end-century. So as you can see, in warmer and weather, it is getting, we are getting more temperatures, more average temperature and more precipitation during the year. But it's also getting wilder because we are having five times the number of days above 30 degrees centigrade. We are having a portion, a quarter of days below minus 15. Iceing days are getting also divided by two, and frost days are also less. I want to stop here if someone wants to have a question, don't want clarification on.
Thank you so much for this. And I think it's, when we look outside, that's what's scaring us. But what you are presenting, as, as we get further into this, is more about empowering us to know that what we are seeing, we can have an impact on. So, so I thank you for that. And a question down here, Councilor Leahy.
Yes, thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. It was very timely that you paused at this moment because I was trying to understand. You were talking about myths and included weather as a myth on Slide 4. But then on this slide, on Slide 6, you're saying that weather is a factor in climate change. So help me understand the difference between, you have a myth slide that lists weather as a factor, that of being a myth. Climate change is not weather. But then you are talking about slides that say that the weather is getting warmer and that's evidence of climate change. So which is a myth and which is what, what, I'm having a little bit of a challenge trying to understand the contradiction between those two slides.
I'll, I'll let Mr. Ross answer in a minute. But I think the difference is when people say, it's just weather. You're going through me as I'm in the chair. So I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Ross. And I think, believe the difference is when people say, it's just weather. And your, your presentation is showing it's more than that.
Exactly. Through you, Madam Chair. To Councilor Leahy, exactly like that. People usually say when they want to deny climate change, they say that is the weather and it's normal for the weather to cool off and, and warm up. However, it is not natural weather. We are impacting our weather, our weather patterns. So that is what, that is what is called climate change. When we talk about weather, we say, the summer is cold, tomorrow is wet, next week is going to be warm. That is weather, like what we see, the daily variations. When we talk about climate is like the long-term variation. So climate change is the weather patterns variation. So now it's more, weather is more unpredictable right now. So when we say that, saying that weather is, like, is not climate change, is weather variation, that is not accurate. I don't know if that answered your question.
Through you, Madam Chair. Well, yes, to, to a point. I think that it's actually confusing the way that it states. It doesn't say it's, we're not relying just on weather patterns. You have a list there that says climate change is not. And so I also would like to understand, when you say long-term weather pattern changes, how long are we talking? If we're talking, you know, the past five years, we were lucky, we had a, a couple of mild winters. But we had a very harsh winter and ice storm. So when you're talking long-term and you're making decisions and, and making statements according to patterns, I think we need to have a definition of what long-term means in, in terms of evaluating the data. And if we are going to look at it in terms of thousands of years, hundreds of years, or if we're just talking about, we're only going to look at, at the current within the past five years when you're referring to long-term.
Okay, I think we're getting off topic from this presentation. There's a lot more to go through this. So I'm going to ask you to pick up on the presentation in the interest of time. And Councilor Leahy, if you would like more, a more in-depth understanding of how weather relates to climate change, I'm sure Ms. Ross will make herself available.
Well, no.
Councilor Johns.
I just wanted to be respectful. I, I actually have a family commitment with a hard stop for me at 3:30. And I apologize, I didn't know that we would be this much time today that I needed to address. So I will be walking out in two minutes, and I didn't want to be rude. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And we're going to try and, and move this along because other people have also mentioned that they have other commitments.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe that it's our duty as council members, this is our opportunity in committee of the whole to discuss whatever issues are coming before us, that the presentation that's being made, that it's understandable, not only to the councillors, but to the residents, of what is going on here. Because we're going to be asked to vote, I'm going to be asked to vote as a councillor at the end of the presentation to approve the, to consider, well, let's see.
No, we're just, okay, Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
I'm taking control back here, and we're asking the presenter to continue on because other people have hard stops, including staff. We are only receiving this. There's no action.
Point of order. We, we are allowed five minutes, as far as my understanding is concerned, according to procedures. And if it takes longer than five minutes, that is what our purpose and our job is as councillors. And if other councillors make, you know, appointments or have other obligations, their, their first obligation, in my opinion, I would say respectfully, is to complete and conduct the Committee of the Whole meeting in a, in a respectful way to respect everybody's time.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I appreciate that. This was a, a family thing. So I, my family's first, and I just wanted to respond to that. So thank you.
And I wanted to say that this meeting was supposed to be done before 2 o'clock. We're now at, at 1, at 3:30. So we're going to continue on with the presentation.
Point of order. I do, I do, would like, because we are obligated, it's my understanding, and I'd like to have.
What's your point of order?
My point of order is that it takes as long as it takes to discuss these matters. That's our job.
That's not a point of order. You're ruled out of line. We're going to continue with the presentation.
Through you, Madam Chair. And answering Councilor Leahy concerns, anytime I will be happy to clarify these, these concepts. But kind of fast-tracking on what we were discussing is that when we talk about weather, usually was predictable. So that is when we talk about weather patterns. Now we cannot predict weather. And we usually say, we have the say of, we cannot control weather. But we were able to most, more or less predict what is going to, what the season is going to look like. Now, we cannot even do that. And we are looking 20 years, 50 years of storms happening every two years, every five years. And that is when we are talking that weather is changing. But climate change is not weather, is the change in weather patterns. Continuing with this, this is the Climate Action Program journey. And this is kind of embarrassing for me to, to say. But when, when I started in 2022, I wasn't sure what I was doing related to climate change. And I am happy that I had the opportunity to write several grant applications that we didn't get, but helped me to get the clarification of what we are looking at at municipality. And part of that was that council declared a climate emergency in 2023. We have a council-approved environmental strategy in 2024. And right now, I'm presenting to you a little bit of the result of that policy work as, in, in the form of a Climate Action Program that we are developing in 2025 and 2026. So while we're doing this, we have, as I mentioned before, the environmental strategy approved. And even though the climate change is not part of the five thematic areas of the environmental strategy, it is transversal to everything. And that is why it's not a section. It is also not a section in environmental strategy because can get lost. So that is why, as being part of the environmental strategy is a program of itself that directly applies to the implementation of the environmental strategy. So what we want, we want EG to be part. And what being part means, part of the solution, of course, is being practical, actionable, realistic, and trackable or traceable. So this is how climate action is presented. We have a component of adaptation and a component of mitigation. And when we talk about adaptation, we talk about actions that manage, that can help us prepare for the impacts of climate change. While mitigation is having something that reduces our footprint or the greenhouse gas emissions that we produce in our daily lives. There is a portion of adaptation and mitigation that usually overlaps. So planting trees are both adaptation and mitigation. Complete communities are part of both as well. So in this concept, we have our Climate Action Program with adaptation and mitigation formed by three projects. The first one is the Climate Adaptation Plan that we started last year with the help of the Ontario Resource Centre of Climate Adaptation. And we developed the Climate Change Risk and Vulnerability Assessment. The next section of that was the community engagement that we carry on the first quarter of this year and that we are going to continue implementing during summer with more groups and community. We have the mitigation part, that is the corporate and community energy plan. And this is to reduce our footprint, to increase energy efficiency. And part of that, because it reduces energy efficiency, sorry, it increases energy efficiency and reduces climate change vulnerability, we have the Thinking Green Development Standards. So Climate Action Plan is to help improve our response to the erratic climate. Thinking Green Development Standards is to build a resilient and more sustainable future. And the Corporate and Community Energy Plan is to improve energy efficiency, reduce energy consumption, energy bills, and improve air quality, contributing to health generally in the environment. So we benefit, our benefit of having a Climate Action Program is that we will have enhanced resilience. The community will be more resilient and more able to react to events or to be prepared for those events. One, a little bit of a thought that I had earlier this year was that sometimes people can say that we don't need to have these, these, these things in place. But if you remember, we had, there was an accident in Pearson, a, a plane flipped. And no one got hurt on that accident, right? And I remember listening to the news, they saying that there has been years and years of training and developing policy and developing procedures for people to react when things like that happen. And many professionals at the airport never saw an accident like this. However, because they were prepared, they could quickly act, and no one lost their lives or their loved ones. So this is why we need to do this right now. It enhances environmental protection. And as I mentioned before, we are not doing this for us. We are doing this for Blake or your children and grandchildren. And it has economic advantages because we can move towards circular economy. And the circular economy is pretty equitable and, how do you say, when it's for everybody. And we also enhance community health. People can really connect better with their community and their neighbors. And we know that community, and a close-knit community is very healthy for everyone. It reduces even heart attacks. And, and it's also our global responsibility. I remember I watched a movie called The War of Tomorrow. And I was telling to my daughter, this is about climate change. And we are fighting today the war of tomorrow. So next step for this program, we are coming step for this program, we are coming in a joint memo with Development Services and a presentation with the Cleaner Partnership, the next CWC, on the advancements we have had with the Thinking Green Development Standards. We are bringing a draft of the Corporate Energy Plan. And later in summer, we will be having a draft of the Climate Adaptation Plan. So any questions? No blue, no green, no earth. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much. And thank you for all the work you've been doing to look through everything we've already been doing and figure out where we need to go from here. And you've laid it out very clearly for us, and, and I appreciate that very much. There was a comment earlier about rain barrels. And I'm wondering if that's something that, that we could add into the resolution now, if Counsel Lehe wanted to, about exploring the possibility of rain barrels, making rain barrels available to residents and having staff report back on that. If you wanted to make that motion, I would certainly entertain that.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would like to make a motion that our Environmental Initiatives Director looks into the feasibility of starting a rain barrel program that's accessible to all residents of East Goulunbury in the desire to participate and contribute to our water sustainability in the future.
And if it's okay with you, we'll add that on to receipt, you moved to receive, and, and that, is that fine? Thank you. Any comments or questions, either for Ms. Ross or to the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask all in favor. And that's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have one last report on translation policy. I'll turn that over to General Manager Gandhi to take us through that. I just wanted to say off the top, I'm very appreciative to have a policy, even though it hasn't been a problem for us yet. It's always nice to kind of get in front of it, put some, some rules around it, and so, so we know exactly what we're doing. So go ahead and lead us through that.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So this Corporate Services report was prepared by the Director of Communications and Customer Service, Bethany Lee, with input from the Town's Accessibility, Indigenous Equity Coordinator, Shannon Genisopulu, and of course, with input from our Fire and Emergency Service Team and Communications. I want to acknowledge that diverse group, because it takes a lot of people to put something like this together. And it introduces the Town's first translation policy. I'll stop, I'll preface this by saying that on our website, we've actually had a translate button for quite some time, about two to three years now. And so we're, we're excited about this. This takes it a step further. And it aligns with our Indigenous Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility: The Idea Action Plan. This is one of the action items that come from that. And in, in June, you're going to also see our Service Experience Strategy, and it also links to that. It's all about how people feel when they interact with the town. The policy provides a standardized approach for translation services grounded in community demographics, municipal priorities. Approximately 16% of EG residents speak nonofficial languages more of, most often at home, according to the 2021 census. That's a, that's a, that's a big number. And it has changed dramatically over the last census period. And so I just wanted to point that out. The top three languages as this policy will speak to, and these are the languages that we would translate documents in specific circumstances. I want to point out that this is not for every single document and every single item that we would prepare. It would be more for documents, and the policy articulates how this would be applied, but specific to instances where there's health and safety, or there's emergency risk, or information that's critical to voting or elections, that type of thing. The top three languages are Mandarin, Cantonese, and Russian. And so those are the languages that would be translated to, plus French, because it is our official language. So with that, I'd like to thank the staff who are very much involved in steering, in steering this document. And I applaud them for doing so. And, and I welcome any questions, or if questions need to be directed to our Director of Communications and Customer Services, Bethany is here as well.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the staff who, who worked on this. It's a very well-written policy. I appreciate that. Can I have someone move to receive and approve the translation policy? Moved by Counsel Lehe. Counsel Lehe, if you'd like to speak to it, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. As someone who has multiple degrees in Chinese studies, and I speak Mandarin, I'd like to provide some clarification between there, there is a difference that exists between the spoken language and the written language. So when we say that the top three languages spoken in East Goulunbury are Mandarin, Cantonese, and Russian, there needs to be consideration taken into effect whether or not the simplified system of characters is used versus the traditional system of characters being used because different populations of, have come from different parts of mainland China and Asia. And in different parts of Asia, they use a different written language as well as speaking different dialects. So under the umbrella of Chinese, there's 13 different dialects. Most people who are, who come to Canada from places like Hong Kong typically speak Cantonese versus most people from Taiwan speak Mandarin with their own accent, which is different from Mandarin speakers in Beijing. So I would just like to ask that staff clarify which version of the written language they will be using, either simplified or traditional, and, or whether they will decide to use both versions of the Chinese language. So it's a little bit more complex than just saying the Chinese language, or even more complex than just saying Mandarin or Cantonese. The written language will, there'll be some other decisions that need to be made within that translation policy.
Thank you. I'll ask Ms. Gandhi to respond.
So through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for that input. It's very valuable. We are going to be working with a translation company that would be assisting us in determining the most appropriate translation to use. That combined with as deep a dive as we can make in terms of the census data, will help us determine what of those, to what extent that information is available, that will help us determine the dialect that is selected for the purpose of translation. So we will do our best to, to match those things, as you rightly pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else with any questions? Seeing none, we have this duly moved. All those in favor? And that's carried. Is there anything else to add, Ms. Gandhi?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We are at Item K for Parks, Recreation, and Culture with Counselor Cron in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item on the agenda today. It's the Joint Parks, Recreation, and Culture and Corporate Services Memo, Health and Active Living Plaza Grand Opening Program. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Carmison, who is like an expectant parent waiting for the birth of a new child.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The memo prepared for council, the joint memo prepared for council provides an exciting update with tentative dates for the Health and Active Living Plaza Grand Opening Program. The memo provides information related to the proposed activities and timing. The opening program is being organized with a multidisciplinary team of town staff, including the library. And listed in the report are all the town staff contributing to this opening program, which is co-led by Parks, Recreation, and Communications. The dates provided are subject to completion of the facility and, and occupancy for the public to the facility. Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff will continue to work with Communications to continue to keep the public informed and excited as we move towards the opening program dates. Be happy to answer any questions. Counsel may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carmison. Could I have a mover for this? Counselor Carruthers, are there any questions? Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering when, when the council cannonball into the pool will be scheduled. Serious question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that would be Saturday with the public, with the free swim.
Thank you.
Just bring your swimsuit.
Yep.
And a towel.
Yeah, no question.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Carmison, I'll, I'll ask you what I ask you every meeting that we get together. We're, we're still on budget?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we very much are still well under the council-approved budget and within the timelines, which we committed to 2025, in this case, well within 2025.
Great.
With the expected opening in October.
Great, thank you. Unless there's any other questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, carried. Mr. Carmison, do you have anything else you'd like to share with committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further at this time.
Thanks. Does committee have anything for Mr. Carmison? Seeing none, I'll hand it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're at Item L, Engineering and Public Works with Counselor Lehe in the chair.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. So just for clarity, in case viewers at home watching the video are wondering why we're skipping, in a sense, item number one. We took care of that in a, in the meeting before we took a break for lunch. So we are moving on to item number L2, which is Mount Albert Downtown Revitalization Update. And I would like to have a mover for this. Thank you, Counselor Cron. And then we will ask our General Manager, Mr. Molinari, to provide comments regarding the update. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, as far as an update's concerned, utility relocation work is underway with some minor components that are currently being finalized. And some of these last items are required in order to wrap up our design. But regardless of this, staff are looking to tender the project imminently and maintain the project schedule. So in order to maintain that schedule, utility relocations are being coordinated with the overall construction. The project construction tender is on track to be issued in May-June, and site construction following thereafter with completion by the end of 2026, which is the same timing that, that, that we provided to council at the start of the project. And it also aligns with the grant funding that, that's been obtained for this, this project. We also note that the project schedule's been adjusted to accommodate the 100th anniversary of the Mount Albert Sports Day from June 6 to 8. We generally, we've looked forward to just getting this project started and underway and very shortly, and, and all the benefits that it's going to provide to residents. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from members of council? Yes, Counselor Cron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, so just to paraphrase, construction is going to start very soon, May-June. We're going to take a pause for Sports Day, and then it should ramp up again in the, in the fall, and then into next year. And we'll, we'll have this wrapped up before, hopefully before we, we celebrate Christmas in 2026, correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. We are, we're issuing the tender in May-June. So the, the award of that tender will be, will be after that, but probably June-July. And then it's full steam ahead with construction on site. So there will be lots of activity happening this summer. But we are, we do recognize that Mount Albert Sports Day is, is right in there as well. And, and we've modified our schedule to accommodate that, because obviously, we don't want to have lots of heavy equipment in there at the same time as, as that event's taking place.
Yeah. And thank you, and thank you for that, Mr. Molinari. Through you, Madam Chair. Just, I, I think it's important to note that the public know that we, the funding, the grant funding that we were given on this, we didn't receive it upfront. We actually submit our receipts, and then we get reimbursed. Is, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. So we have, we have the, the funding in hand, but we do have to, we have to abide by those, by the terms of that, that agreement. So as, as we pay the bills, we will, we will submit for reimbursement through the grant project.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions from other members of council? I have a question as chair, because, you know, our, our residents in Mount Albert have had their, their hopes raised year after year. And we've been given different start times. I'm glad to hear that it's, it will finally be starting in May-June of 2025. However, is, is my understanding correct that we received the funding in 2019, various grants, and that we do have to abide by, there is criteria of a completion date? And I'm just concerned that because of all the delays, will it actually be completed by whatever criteria are included in the grant? My understanding was it was October 2026, not December 2026. So do you have clarity on the deadline by which it has to be completed by the Town of Mount Albert in order to receive those grants?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I don't actually have the, the final date. We are proposing to be finished by the end of 2026. And right now, we're tracking on time for that. We're actually pretty close to the original project schedule that was outlined at the beginning of this project. So I don't think that we are particularly behind schedule on anything. We are actually already started construction. And, you know, with utility relocates, and work is underway. And we have, at this point in time, there's no reason to think that we're not going to meet our project deadline. In fact, we're, we're tracking quite well for that right now.
Through, sorry? Through, through me, yes? Yes, through myself. So I have another question through myself. I would like to ask, as a resident who lives in the general vicinity, I, I recall years ago receiving a little map, and it showed where the scope of work would end and, and where the paving would end. And over the years, because of various delays, it, it's, the scope of work seems to have shrunk. And so I would like clarification on that, because residents living on Main Street, in fact, are concerned about the paving of all of Main Street and where the, where the, the boundaries of the project will go. But I, I do think it's important that we have official confirmation of the, if there is any criteria in the grant, that there is a cutoff, a deadline date that we need to have this completed by.
Through you, Madam Chair. So yes, there is a cutoff date. It is in 2026. It's either October or December. I don't recall at this point. But either way, we're on target to meet either one of those dates. And with regards to the project boundaries, this project started off with a larger project area in order to determine the scope of the project through public consultation and discussion with the community in terms of what the needs were. So we started off with a larger project area, and that project area was discussed with residents, where it was shrunken down to a project limits in order to, in order to make that a workable project within the, the project costing and the budget that's been provided. So for instance, if we would have completely rebuilt all the roads and so forth, that would use more of the project budget. That wouldn't, that would mean that would be a smaller project. So part of this is, is, is working to the budget and the grant funding that's been provided. And, and staff have, have worked very closely with the community and council through a number of PICs in order to establish what that project limit would be and what the scope of the project would be. And we tried to bring that back to council iteratively, so that council was aware of what the public requirements were and what the comments were. And we tried to readjust that design to meet the public's expectations. And I think we've got a pretty good design right now that, that we're ready to, to implement. So I, I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you very much, General Manager Molinari. So I just want to be crystal clear for all the residents who have many questions for the councillors, not just the ones in, in Mount Albert. But so just to be completely clear, have we had the grant funding in a Town of East Goulunbury bank account since 2019 earning interest for us? And if so, I'm just wondering, well, if you could just answer that question, that if, if we have had accountability of that money since 2019, and if we have earned any amount of significant interest that has been reinvested in the project because of the delays over the past six to seven years?
Through you, Madam Chair. Those project funds are available to the town, but we won't be getting the funds until we submit invoices on them. So there's no interest. It's not sitting in a bank account at the town. It's not sitting in a bank account at the town. The province has agreed to provide their funding for the project scope as originally set out in the, in, with our successful grant application. And as we submit those bills, the province will, and the feds through that grant project will be supplying us with the funds to pay our bills.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So we're winding down. This is the last item on the agenda that we have. And so I'm just going to give the opportunity to any other counselors if they have any follow-up questions for General Manager Molinari regarding this. If not, we have, Counselor Cron has moved this motion, and I would like to take the vote. All in favor of receiving this? And that has been carried. Thank you very much. And General Manager Molinari, is there any other topic that you would like to discuss today?
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. And back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. There are no items listed on the agenda for M to P. Are there any updates to provide under these headings? If none, then we will proceed to Item Q to adjourn. I'm not seeing any. And at this time, I want to thank staff. It's been a terrific afternoon to catch up on a whole lot of things. So appreciate very much. I know it doesn't just happen. You do a lot of legwork ahead of time to make sure that we have the details that we need. So I want to thank everyone for that. And at this time, if there are no other items, it is 3:58 on my clock. Be it resolved at the meeting of the committee, the whole council adjourn today at 3:58. All those in favor? Oh, I need a mover. Counselor Cron, he always does that. All those in favor and carried. Thank you very much. Staff in particular, I know you put a lot of effort into today, and it certainly showed. Thank you.